How's my hair?
Your hair? Fire, dawg.
I've been tripping on my hair today, bro. I never do that.
My hair is fucked up.
Yeah?
It's my day for fucking on my hair.
Fucking like, what, alright, hair products, fool?
I use, um, Moco de Gorila.
Moco de Gorila, cut.
I got, um, so Lay Right, I got a Lay Right.
What the fuck?
Have you ever heard of Lay Right?
You don't have no neon like gooey, ooey gooey looking shit?
I remember you used to have to drive to Long Beach, all the way to Fourth Street and Cherry.
That's how much you appreciate your hair?
Back in the day, like, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
You used to have a fucking hair product dealer?
Yeah, bro. And then now they're everywhere.
Like, fucking, I think, I think I was watching, uh, or listening. Yeah, shout out to Spasito, the sponsors podcast, dawg. Um, I was watching, uh, or Joe List podcast, or somebody in the, in one of those New York podcasts. One of the comics had a, a cologne dealer, fool, that he would have to meet up with, and like off the trunk, bro, just sell colognes.
You haven't noticed those colognes always smell the same? They have this different names, but they all smell the same.
Just different bottles?
Super strong, yeah.
They had like a little essence or something to make it a little different.
Little, just, yeah.
Add a little drop of cinnamon right there.
Breaking Bad for fucking colognes and shit.
I'm pretty sure it's still a big market in the bootlegging, like downtown LA shit, pretty sure.
Yeah, like, there's, there's tons of, uh, I remember one time, I bought a, a cologne that cost me like sixty bones, right? At the, at the fucking Macy's.
Yeah.
And then I, I was like, man, fucking, back then when we were kids, fool, like, cologne was like, uh, top notch shit to have, you know? It's like Yeezys and shit.
You gotta have cologne.
Cologne, right?
Especially if you blaze it.
So I bought it, fool, and then I went to, um, like a swap meet, and I found the same cologne, and I was like, how come this one is twenty bucks?
Yeah.
Right? But I saw like, I was like, alright, cool, I'mma cop it. When I got home, fool, I'm, like, the bottle was shaped different.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
A little different?
Yeah, like, the logo, fool, was like, like, posed different and shit, like, you, you know?
The label was coming off?
Yeah, fool, trip out. Why is it like, trip out for colognes, dawg?
You got cologne nowadays?
Yeah, fool.
Yeah?
Yeah. WD forty?
WD forty?
Damn. I don't be wearing cologne no more, really. People always ask me though, but it's just deodorant.
Okay. You just smell good naturally, bro. And that's what we fucking like here, guys. Welcome back to another episode of the Little Brown Boys Podcast. Um, we've been doing this for a while. We appreciate everybody listening. Go ahead and drop a like.
Subscribe, follow, you already know social medias, TikTok, uh, Instagram, fucking, we're on Reddit now.
Reddit?
Yeah.
What's up with it? Oh, we ready for that, bro?
I don't think we're ready for Reddit.
Reddit is crazy.
Are you ready? Cause I'm, you ready?
Bro, they're mean.
On Reddit, bro.
Reddit can take over shit. Reddit made the whole GameStop shit happen.
Really, right?
Hey, I'll fucking, I'll fucking jump off a bridge, dawg.
As comedians with content, we really gotta have thick skin for Reddit, cause them motherfuckers, bro, go hard, bro.
It's all good in the hood, bro.
Another planet.
I'mma get a call from Frankie middle of the week, like, hey, fool, have you seen the fucking, the thread on fucking Reddit, bro? They're fucking talking, they calling me racist.
I don't want to do this.
Let's see, fool, let's see, I'mma drop the last two episodes with this.
Hey, fool, just, thank you for, you know? Yeah, you know, just like that, real quick. Hey, fool, if, if I could play a role in anything, it'd be a crying.
Crier dude?
Yeah. Fire!
That's pretty cool.
Fool, I fucking cry passionately.
You can cry on demand?
Maybe.
Start crying. I think if you train.
I can, fool.
If you were to train.
I go back to that one fucking night, dawg, in my head, and I'm just like, hey, motherfucker.
The river starts flowing.
Motherfucker bitch. Nah, I have a lot, I've had a lot of traumatizing moments in my life, where I've been like, fuck, like, if I, if I really, fool, if I could be by myself for ten minutes, and you walk into a room, you will call me, catch me bawling, bro.
Yeah?
Yeah. I can't, I have to put earphones in my, my ears, like, all day long, to listen to podcasts, because I can't be alone with my thoughts.
Wow.
And that's a Little Brown Boy exclusive right there.
There we go, guys. If you guys got any fucking therapist homies?
Yeah.
You know how people be on social media, like, hey, who got this, a plug, like? Who got this plug? Tap in. This fool's Instagram is like, who's got a therapist plug? Tap in.
Just, hey, funny, it's about, uh, self-love, tap in.
Anybody out there slanging encouraging words, tap in.
Life coaches.
Yeah, bro, tap in, uh.
Hey, big, big, for big facts, fool.
Who's got the fucking?
But that's fucked up, fool, the first thing that you went to was racism, like, why would?
I don't know.
Yeah?
Nah, actually, on Reddit, if you're being racist, there'll be extra racist to you. You know what I mean?
Like, extra crispy, right?
Yeah, you won't get cancelled on Reddit. You'll get fucking destroyed on Reddit.
Sadio.
You know what I mean? Like, oh, he thinks he's funny.
Okay.
Oh, this guy, oh, look at this motherfucker, and then it'll just be a thread of fucking insults.
Just a bunch of, ah, okay.
I see you.
Alright.
Yeah. I trolls, you know? Fucking trolls, bro.
That's what's happening with the LA City Council, fool, right now.
You think they're trolling us with that? You think she was just trolling?
Trolling? Ah, I just, I think, I mean, the lady, the, she just got caught, uh, calling Wahakans fools like racist slurs, like, enanitos, feos.
Enanitos, right, this?
That type of shit, fool. You know, like?
Fuck that bitch.
Fool, legitimately, fool, if you look at, at a picture of her, she looks loped out, fool, like, crazy, like, she has a tressa tatted on her back and shit.
She's messed out, too.
Maybe, who knows, fool, like, legal meth?
Yeah.
Like prescribed mineral? Yeah, fool.
That's basically what it is, bro.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And she just let it fly, fool. You know what's funny is like, I can imagine, like, like, in, in my, in my head imagination, I can imagine these fools like, like, talking that shit, and the fool with the mic, just being like,
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Getting a little closer and closer.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah?
Trying to instigate, you know? What else?
Yeah.
You can mask.
Yeah, and, and that's how you really feel?
Damn.
Yeah.
Let it out, it's fine.
Yeah, it's just, you know, this is a safe space.
Safe space.
Fuck you and your safe space, dawg.
Got that bitch.
Yeah, fool.
That's crazy.
We, hey, we were talking about it the other day, and, and fucking, we were like, damn, imagine what she's going through right now, fool.
Yeah, like, what do you think her life is like? What do you think the next forty-eight hours of her life?
Yeah, like, you ever, you ever got caught, like, did you ever go to a party, like, during the weekend, and, like, you got caught sneaking out? That's what she's going, like, you got caught after the party, though.
Yeah, yeah.
You got home, and then now, like, you had the fun. Better look.
Yeah, kinda like the first time getting faded.
Yeah, like, you had the fun, and then you got caught, and now, like, you sit in despair with your thoughts, and now you crying.
All hungover?
All hungover.
Yeah, and your parents talking shit to you?
She was right there, she was the highlight of the life of the city, LA City Council, oh, come over here and eat for free, oh, come over here, write this yacht.
Yeah, no estas más pendeja porque no estas más grande.
There you go, fool. Some, yeah, that's, that's.
Some hurtful words.
Some hurtful ass shit.
That's crazy, bro.
Yeah, and like, I was telling you, fool, like, like, imagine the husband, too, fool, like, fucking, I fucking told you, you know? Just a bunch of fucking, see? See? What'd I say? A bunch of fucking.
So, do you, do you think this lady got ma- blackmailed? Cause the recording was a year ago.
Oh, word?
It just came out.
Okay, these are new facts that I didn't know about.
Do you think she got blackmailed?
For sure, fool. And she was like, leak it, leak it bitch.
I'm fucking ready.
She has, I'm tired of this job already, if anything.
Yeah, huh?
Yeah, she was.
She's like, I'm not gonna conform to what you're saying.
Her eyebrows say, leak it bitch.
She already stole enough money. She's like, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. See, cause I mentioned this before, but like, when shit goes down in like, real life, my brain automatically goes to like Netflix concepts, you know?
Yeah.
Like, this is like. Behind the scenes, like, what happened, what really happened.
Yeah, like, this is a political thing, right? So I'm, in my head, I'm already going fucking like, uh, a political show, so I'm thinking, oh, yeah, the powers that be probably told her, hey, look, you have to do this, you have to.
Timon.
Pressuring her, if you don't, we're gonna drop this tape, and she was like, you know what, fuck it, drop the tape, I'm not gonna fucking suck your dick right now. And then that shit leaked, but, I mean, she was saying some crazy shit, some passionate ass shit, like, that's crazy, bro.
She was like, she's with, like.
Like, passionately racist?
Kinda, yeah, like, it's just the saying, like, he's with the blacks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a nineteen fifty shit right there.
Just dropping bars on Chris right now. Are you on Malibu?
He's with the blacks.
Imagine being on Bali and watching racism? Like, oh, like a three D experience, like, oh, shit, racism.
So what do you think happens after? I mean, she already resigned, I mean, she's probably gonna struggle to get a job after this.
I think she's gonna start selling fucking, um, you know, like, like, no, I see her, like, getting so demoted, fool, that she's gonna start working at like a funeral home, selling coffins and shit, specials. You know, like, oh, we got, we got like the two for one, you know, not even like, you're gonna not see her ever again.
Not even that, she just sells the plot holes.
Yeah, like, oh, you want the stone or the marble?
She digs the holes, man.
Grave digger, damn, she got the money to grave digger.
Is this one for me?
Yeah. Oh, this is where my career is at.
Yeah. Uh, she's gonna get buffed, though. Shoveling is fucking.
It's a trip, which, like, if she does get a job in the, in like, what, five years, three years, something like that, she does get a job, people are gonna be like, aren't you that fucking lady that was like, super mean?
She's gonna have to move, change her name.
Yeah.
Wear a mask. There's, I seen this, a video of this YouTuber that got caught up, like, talking to youngsters and shit, and this motherfucker went from like, being a very popular YouTuber, to like, not being able to get a job. Ended up, ended up driving Uber with like mask and shit, and people were like, hey, aren't you that one fool from that one thing? And then he ended up with like no job, and that's what I'm saying, this fool moved to another state, changed his name, and like, he's basically blackballed from every.
She has to Dexter that shit, or she has to go to a fucking Antarctica, and start selling fucking hunting gear.
Yeah, you gotta bust Rafael Caro Quintero and kill your dad.
Or just get a face transplant, like, fucking face off.
Yeah.
Just.
Vanilla ice.
She's another politician now.
Just make sure you get a good.
Or she can transition, dawg.
True, they can do no wrong.
Yep.
They can do no wrong, right? They always get a dog.
There's options, fool.
She could do some shit.
There's options, big dog.
Just go swimming in the ocean.
Stop being racist, fool.
Sadio, huh? Actually, the homie Richard put me like.
Was it a white lady?
She was Mexican. That's the worst part.
Yeah, it was brown on brown crime.
Brown on brown crime, fool.
Mexicans are racist as fuck.
If I may, the last thing I wanna add, that was like a clear, blatant abuse of power. That's all that was. It, and racism, too.
Right, racism, intimidation, I'm pretty sure she was trying to intimidate somebody, or peer pressure somebody, or like, hood pop.
That's.
Be like the, like, the, the main head of like a crew.
Yeah.
You know how like the main credit of, of crews be saying some wild shit? Like, god damn.
I'm gonna fucking, fucking crap.
Yeah, but you gotta be careful, like, even us, like, we say some crazy shit sometimes, and it's like, sometimes it could, it could bite you in the ass later, like, like a simple hot take, you know? Could some, one day be turned into some crazy shit.
Timon.
Or you could like, just keep pushing the, the envelope, keep pushing the line and saying crazy shit, and then end up fucking in court, or some shit, end up fucking having to do jail time.
Your honor, let the record show that this fool. This fool right here is a fucking bitch.
No lie.
No cap.
Yeah, but like.
Let the, hey, your honor, let the record show, no cap.
No caps in here, your honor. It's against the rules.
Imagine that, just like a, like a lawyer with like a big ass rim as a chain, you know, like a suited up.
Fucking, uh, Flavor Flav?
Yeah, Flavor Flav as a lawyer. That's a funny skit, if it was two thousand and eight. You know what I mean?
But yeah, like that fool, Alex Jones, you know Alex Jones?
Timon.
That fool, he, he said that the Sandy Hook mass shooting was a hoax.
Yeah, they, you gotta pay those people.
And now, after court and everything, he owes the victims, the families of the victims, almost a billion dollars, bro, for some words that he said on his show.
Add me to the tab real quick.
Damn, is he that rich?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I was like, how the fuck is he?
He's probably right there like Joe Rogan, Joe Rogan.
He filed for bankruptcy not that long ago, bro.
Oh, yeah, that's the movida, fool.
I think he knew this was coming, so he was like.
Look, I'll, I'll, I'll show you the game plan like a football coach. You move your assets. You move your assets. Swedish accounts, Swedish accounts. Just kidding, I don't know. But, um, nine hundred and sixty mil, fool, who has that?
Nobody, he, he's not, he's gonna.
Well, I'm from the hood, bro, like, to me, like, damn, this fool bought a twenty-four. You know what I mean? When you put up with the twenty-four, you're trying to pull a statement, you know?
So this fool since two thousand twelve has been, uh, explaining on his show Infowars, that Sandy Hook was a conspiracy.
Yeah.
That the families of the victims were crisis actors, and they all got together, sued his ass, and they were in trial for a while, and now he's fucking, and it's crazy, this fool is out of his mind, like, he has a video on his show, of his show, where he's reacting to the live, uh, court setting, where they're saying how much he's owing.
Get the fuck outta here.
And then, and then the judge goes, oh, to family so-and-so, we is thirty million, he goes, yes, 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 and then like, to this family over here, another sixty million, he's like, yeah.
So that fool made content out of his?
He made content, fool, that's how he's gonna pay this off. He's gonna have to keep making content and all his ad revenue, if he still has ads, is gonna go to those people.
No mames, wait.
But that's what I'm saying, like, this is a, a crazy wild hot take, you know, what, this is what we do on this podcast, is like, we read shit, and then we go, okay, what's, what's the hot take, right? Like, let's get some fucking shit popping off, but that motherfucker crossed the line, I think, just like this other bitch in fucking LA City Council.
And over here, fool, I'm Mr. Carrick.
So we gotta be careful with our takes, maybe. Or maybe not, fuck it, I don't care.
Hey, fool, fucking, uh, what is it, what is it called when it's, uh, ta timido?
Ta timido, ta tibio?
Tibio, tibio takes, right?
Lukewarm takes.
Lukewarm takes, dawg.
Same, I already swished it in my mouth for three seconds.
I put two ice cubes on these takes.
Did you ever eat sopay de baso with a ice cube in it?
Hell, yeah.
That's the best way to cool it down.
You're too mean, bro.
Crazy, bro.
That's funny, fool, I went to.
So it, it cracks as soon as.
Yeah, that's pretty science.
I wanna go get a coffee, and then I told her, like, yeah, una cafe de olla right here in Plaza Mexico, and I, and I shop small, hey, by the way, so Plaza Mexico, and then she was like, oh, sí, and then bloodyje, put two ice cubes, porfa. Because I wanna drink it right now, not an hour later.
I've been to, I've been to coffee shops where they have ice, like, in a little tray next to the coffee.
Oh, word?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
You gotta get with it, bro, and then next to that was a tray full of like hard-boiled eggs.
Mm.
This is like the spot where you go right before work, like, you, you see like gardeners and shit right there, like, you know, like, everybody's on a first-name basis right there, everybody knows each other.
Sick ass fool. The Little Brown Boys is now sponsored by Tamalerías Marias. Tamale season is upon us. Go try their seasonal items like pumpkin horchata, pumpkin horchata iced coffee, or even Mexican desserts like caramelized pumpkin slices. Tamale happy hour, bro. From seven PM to eight PM, all tamales are two fifty. Tamale Thursday, tamales are two for five, special flavors are three, and mini tamales are one fifty. Every day from six AM to eight AM, they got a special going on for five bucks, you get one tamal, one small champurrado, or a small coffee. You can't go wrong. It doesn't sound tamal. Shout out Tamalerías Marias, bro. That's the spot right here in Linwood. By the way, we're sponsored by them.
Well, y'all see it right there, you guys see that green ass fucking sign?
Go visit, they got all kinds of deals, so, um, but, moving on, fool, fucking Jonah Hill, talking about more fucking fools, more white fools, Jonah Hill.
Fucking love white people.
Yeah.
They fucking help us make content, bro.
Yeah, we're just like, okay, guys. Just taking notes like two fools in laboratories.
Keep going, keep going, talk more shit.
Okay, another hot take, lukewarm take right there. Nah, Jonah Hill's gonna play, um, one of the sickest fools in golf, fool, fucking.
John Daly, John Patrick Daly, bro.
That fool, John Daly, fool, is like, a fucking, like, the, the wrestler of golf.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think he golfed in like, uh, USA pants before.
Yeah, that fool has the craziest fits when he's golfing, yeah.
He's like the, the, what is it, the Shia LaBeouf of golf, golf.
That fool's the, like, um, like, not an outlaw, but he's like the, the outlier. Everybody on the.
Ball out.
Everybody on the course right now, like, on tour these days, like, they got their hydration packs, they got their fucking granola bars, their bananas, you know?
A drone, fucking.
Yeah, this fool's just puffing cigarettes, drinking Diet Cokes, bro. Cigarette, Diet Coke, fool.
Say American lifestyle right there.
And still whooping ass, bro. This fool has the craziest record, like, he's not a normal person.
Yeah.
This fool, John Daly, would drink Crown Royale, get super fucked up, and then play professionally the next day. Like, he'll play hungover, or not even, he'll claim that he's never been hungover in his life. He says that once you drink that much, you don't even feel hungover no more.
Yeah.
And then he just fucking leave his life.
Yeah, John Daly's a shit, fool. I, I.
So he's alcoholic?
Oh, yeah, he's one of us. Yeah, fool, at a point, like, yeah.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering what they're gonna do with the movie, I'm like, they're gonna show this fool all fucking.
Yeah, Jonah Hill's the perfect fool to play those roles, too, dawg.
Yeah.
I'm like, that fool's an icon, like a, like a social icon, Jonah Hill now.
Jonah Hill's a dope actor.
Fool, I, you know what, what clip always fucking brings me back, like, to Jonah Hill, and I'd be like, that's why I fucked with Jonah Hill so much, is when, uh, Jimmy Fallon was like, oh, I just figured you smell. Why would I smell, Jimmy? Why would I smell? Does, does, does it look like I smell? I shower, like, just fucking attacking that fool, dawg, like, does it, stop doing this TV shit in front of me, dawg. I'm a real person, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the fuck I'm talking about, bro. Real people, real fucking takes, real fucking stuff.
The other day, the other day I was on YouTube watching, uh, just random shit, like always, and I seen super bad audition tapes, Timon. So it's like, before the movie was made, they're reading lines with Seth Rogen, and that fool Jonah Hill has, he's reading his lines with Seth Rogen, and I'm tripping out, like, how these fools do it. They have the notes, like, the paper in their hand, they're in a trailer, and they're just reading lines, and you think that he's just like talking normal, that's kinda like what acting is, like, trying to, take a character, and act like I'm like normal. Like, not like when we try to do skits and shit, we're like, we talk like we're doing a commercial in the nineteen seventies.
And then he said, you know what I mean? I can't do, I can't act for shit, fool. I can't.
But fucking John Daly, fucking.
Oh, you're really exercising that iPad, huh?
He has one PGA Tour championship victory, four international victories, and five additional victories.
It's victorious ass fool, sick ass perro. Acting fool, like, right now, predominantly, acting is fucking taking, getting taken over by Latinos, fool, serio.
Yeah.
Like, most of the shit that you see, like, media, all that shit, like, we have hands in there, you know what I mean? Like, for example, Addams Family, The Wednesday Show. Chris, can you look that up? The, The Wednesday Show?
Wednesday Show.
Yeah, like, the whole cast, practically the whole cast is Latino, fool.
Right.
And like, uh, the reason why I brought this up is cause, yeah, that shit is fucking, it looks perfect, by the way, Fred Armisen, SNL, a veteran. That fool like, put his hands in, in this take, and then I think he's gonna play, uh, Uncle Fester, right? Uncle Fester's the shit, fool, and I think, uh, look, if you're to Google Uncle Fester images on Google, yeah, Uncle Fester looks fucking wild, and then he did the Comic Con recently, and he's playing like, that he didn't wanna wear a ball cap. Uh, you should put Fred Armisen. And he didn't wanna wear bear, wear a ball cap, fool, so that fool fucking, uh, went full bald, like, go down, damn, that fool looks cool.
Spooky. Is it coming out cause it's spooky?
Yeah, spooky season, fool, yeah, but, but I just wanted to, uh, highlight that, that fucking, the Addams Family is prob- predominantly like Latino.
Fred Armisen is Latino?
Yeah, he's Latino.
Shit, what kinda, he's German?
That fool, that fool also has hands in a fucking, an HBO show called Los Spookies.
Hmm, yeah, you were telling me about.
That shit is underrated, bro, sadio.
So when you say put his hands in, he's like a producer or an actor?
Like, he's an actor, producer, and all that shit.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't really know, fool, honestly. Like, I just think that shit is tight.
He just has his hands in it, bro.
Yeah, fool, but the, the highlight of Fred Armisen is that he, he, um, I think he did produce fucking Los Spookies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Los Spookies, to me, is a fucking very underrated show.
Right.
It's hilarious, and it's these fucking actors from Mexico, and like, those fools are like, the imagery in it, and, and the way that.
HBO, right?
Yeah, the, the way that they're attacking the Goth scene. That like, is, you know, Mexico has a big ass.
It's in Spanish, right?
Yeah, it's in Spanish and in English. They have a sick ass Goth scene, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And like, they're just two, like, four fools that are just Gothic fools, that are just, uh, like, viewed by civil, like, like, the society, all like, like, fucking, what do you call it? Outlaws and shit? You know, shown by society, but those fools are sick ass special effect fools, and that's what they're called, the Los Spookies, so they just do special effect shit, but it has like a little spooky take to it, and I think it.
Like, special effects in like, like, uh.
Costumes and makeup and like, behind the scenes type shit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's a, it's a comedic take on it.
Right, 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 right.
You know what I mean? And I think that shit is tight, but it's definitely worth the watch.
So it's like city kids in Mexico.
Timon.
Doing art.
Yeah, practically.
Yeah.
What they're doing here in LA.
Right, right.
But with the lowriders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's cool, man, it's cool to see, like you're saying, the Latino people, like, shine in show business, and I feel like it's getting better. I mean, I was listening to Frankie Quiñones on, on, uh, Andrew Santino's podcast.
Yeah.
And like, I feel it, bro. When I was watching this fool on Hulu, at first I was kinda like, ah, like, ah, it's just, it's corny, right? But then, listening to that podcast, and then having the conversation with Richard, and then it's like, for a while, Mexicans have been the butt of the joke.
Sadio.
You know, and like, now we're actually getting some real recognition, you know, and it's not this generation, I mean, of course, it started with like, Paul Rodriguez, George Lopez, you know, Gabriel Iglesias. All this shit, and now it's like, okay, now there's big productions, like, like, on Hulu, like, this fool, and, and this, and, and now it's like, we can't just be the butt of the joke, that's one thing that Richard kinda, I had never thought about it like that. You know, cause I've always thought like this, a joke is a joke, whether you're the head or the butt of the joke, a joke is a joke. If you're tired of being the butt of the joke, get better jokes. You know, become the head of the joke, but like, that's kinda violent, you know, and like, in a perfect world, everybody makes fun of everybody, and nobody gets butthurt, and then he said, oh, but some fools bring in violence, you know, like gang violence, like the whole tiger shit, like gang. And they kill the fun for everybody, because now we can't freely like, just do jokes, because people get butthurt and people get hurt. You know, and like, this shit is kinda putting us on, not a pedestal, but like, alright, take us serious a li- a little bit.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, fool, but I couldn't fucking get it out of my fucking mouth, motherfucker.
What the, you should've took the alpha brain.
Yeah, I took, I fucking, I took a shroom. I was trying to say that, I couldn't say that, and then fuck, we're not ready for Reddit, dawg, but I'm telling you right now, we're not ready for Reddit, fool. Somebody said, um, send us a message one time, like, hey, learn how to speak. To my pers-.
You know that sound in the Transformers?
Ooh. Yeah.
Ooh.
Special effects, those spooky.
Throw that shit in the, throw it in.
Yeah, those are spooky, shout out those are spooky. Nah, fool, but you're right, like, I, I feel it too, fool, I feel the fucking presence of Latino culture, I mean, look at us, fool, we went to the nosotros.org.
Yeah.
Fucking, um, party mixer, and that shit was next level, fool, there was fools with fucking jawlines and shit there. I felt so out of place, dawg.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What I mean?
And this, I feel like it's all like, now making sense to me. You know, like, a couple weeks ago, I was kinda like annoyed by all this Chicano studies, and like, everybody's trying to be Mexican.
They're doing it everywhere.
The culture.
The Latin extra credit fools?
Yeah, just like with um, like the new Black Panther movie. They're making the, they're changing the story for the movie where it's like they're, they came from like Aztec people. And that's like that 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 was never heard of, so that's pretty cool to see.
We're making waves, bro, you know what I mean? Even you saying like that that the LA Council lady like sparked like a thing and.
Fool indigenous indigenous is the cool thing right now. Because of that movement, because now like you got fucking people walking the streets talking about like, yeah, I'm fucking nineteen percent Oaxacan fool. Fucking twenty-three of me, what's up, what's cracking, here's my results. Yeah, fucking, yeah. Yeah, I'm fucking, oh, the signs at the Oaxacan uh march right now are fire.
I mean, come on, bro, we got good jokes.
Like just a little remark like that. There we go, yeah, fool, and then and then like, yeah, fool, we stand, the little brother stands with it and all and shit. Yeah, fool, I don't know how, I'm for sure Aztec or which is the short ones?
This is where we gotta watch ourselves, cuz they were next, you know? You owe me ten bucks.
Yeah, you're gonna be fucking uh Alex Jones and shit. Alejandro Juan?
Alejandro Juan.
That's funny, bro. I can't, I can't, I can't, fool, I can't.
Can't what?
I just can't.
Can't even?
I can't even, dog.
Turning white on us?
Yeah, fool, I can't. I don't know if I can even have it in me to do to find out what I am, fool.
Or like, oh, okay.
You know what I mean? I'm scared.
You want me to tell you where you are?
Fuckin' shit.
You're Mexican, American, grown in Lynwood, California.
I'm a fool.
You have roots of skater, you have roots of uh hip hop head and heavy roots of uh paisa.
Okay, I like that.
Have like not true, but like half, almost there.
We should really like try to do the twenty-four in us.
Cuz at the end of the like, alright, think about it like this, at in today's age, yeah, maybe you grew up, or no, 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 I'll take that back. Maybe your family's roots are in Oaxaca, right? Or wherever, choose a place somewhere else. But you grew up here, listening to this music, hanging out with these people. So like how much of your identity is your roots and how much is it? What you grew up with, so it's like nature versus nurture, right?
You're so smart, fool. What the fuck, right now, I feel like I got a Cornell notes right now or something. But you were saying for nature versus nurture?
Cuz it's like I I reflect on my own thing, right? Yeah, I'm Mexican, all this shit, right? And then people on the internet be like, oh, you're not real Mexican or whatever, and it's like, kind of, you're right, because I did grow up here, I do lis- I did grow up listening to gangster rap. I didn't grow up listening to Chalino like most people claim they do. You know, like, as soon as you turn a cumbia and I dance, right? But I don't listen to it at the gym, you know, or like anything like. Like my identity is more based on how I grew up than than what came before me, even though I still carry that with me like subconsciously.
You don't listen to a lot of Spanish music, like on the regular when you're driving or anything?
Not a lot, but like I'll I'll get a mood, like for example, on Fridays in the morning at work. I'm feeling good, bro, I'll throw on Los Bookies or something, or I'll throw on like the radio on on the website, like El Recuerdo and I'll just listen to oldies. Cuz it reminds me of the days I used to work with my dad and shit, you know, but it's not like my go to, like if if I'm ox. I'm not gonna play fucking like Grupo Firme or nothing like that. I'm I'll probably play like some fucking disco, not not disco, but like you know, like some new funk or something like that.
Some sandstorm.
You know, but you kinda get what I'm saying, alright?
Asking that because I I feel like I try to listen to a lot more Spanish music than I do English music. Like when I'm driving especially.
I think that's, I mean, hot take, we just did a live with uh with some people's uh. Presence on the fucking live and they said, why do peo- why do females go crazy for Bad Bunny, right? And I think the, we just explained it right now, just because the Latino shit is hot right now. It's hot and that's why people going crazy for Bad Bunny who's representing us like sick as fuck.
I get you.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's kinda like when we were kids in like middle school, we were all like. Uh L O Cool J, about to get a hit from.
Bring back the middle school dances?
Air Force Ones, I need two pairs.
Yeah, no freaking dog.
Remember the rubber bands, you know, we were all into that, like, like You Got Served, the movie, like. We were all that, you know, we were all fucking. We were all being urban, you know? And now it's like, okay, now all of a sudden like we're wearing different shit, bro, like.
Now it's Carhartt and fucking Dickies and fucking Ben Davis.
And Cortez and and I mean, it's, I don't know if it's a phase, but I mean. We went from that to fucking Hollister and fucking, I'll hear, remember when fucking like.
You guys owned Hollister?
I got it from the Swami though.
High school.
I got it from the Swami. I went to the Swami early in the morning, at six in the morning.
I remember going to Hollister once and inside the store and I'm like. Oh fuck, no, I'm getting the fuck out of here.
No, but there's always a plug at the Swami, fool, that had the the fucking, the lady that stole from the factory. You know, she would have a bag and then like, oh, I got the Hollister right here, like two for fifty or whatever the fuck. Yeah, it's still hot, it was still a hot price, but you got one extra piece. Right here, the box and shit.
But you feel me though, right? I don't know what's what's next in the next ten years, what are we gonna be doing? Fucking Arabic music videos?
Hey, low key Arabic music, smack sometimes.
You know what I mean, are we just gonna?
Live, you ever seen their weddings?
Bro Bollywood crags.
All the dudes like just battling each other like.
Seriously, and it's like nah, just dudes right now, and it's like a fucking, watch out, high now, just all the homies right now, dog. Get the fuck out of here, it's the homies right now, and it's just like.
Like fucking Bollywood mu- uh Bollywood movies are just long music videos.
They are.
Production goes crazy, and like they're all good feel, I mean, they have love stories and shit like.
There's one video that I did see of a car, like a car chase, and it's like about to spin out and that fool takes a step out of the car. And the car continues to spin out and he just like. Iron Man, who?
You know what, I gotta say this cuz it's in my head right now. I said Arabic and then I said Bollywood and I think they're not the same. I take it back, I think it's Indian and Bollywood and Arabic has like different, I don't know, don't quote me, I learned it, but I forgot. I'm sorry.
But you said, you mentioned something not right now that's on the board, fool, fucking uh working with your pops and shit right now, Fifty Cent and his son, bro.
Pull up, uh, there's a Twitter page, I think it's Hip Hop Something, I don't know, but it's crazy cuz alright.
Fifty Cent versus his son.
It started with uh his son complaining to Fifty Cent that sixty-five hundred dollars was not enough. Uh no, a month, I think.
Oh shit.
Cuz a week, that's crazy, bro. That's fucking twenty-five Gs a month, that's too much.
Damn, you do math too?
And then uh, so his son's like, oh, this is not enough, right? And then uh, the internet goes crazy, they go, all these motherfuckers entitled, they're like he's. He's uh spoiled and then his son makes a video that goes, I'll give up the six thousand five hundred if I could just kick it with my dad. Like I just wanna kick it with you, bro, but then Fifty Cent comes back and trolls him hard, bro, he goes, fuck that.
That fool's cold for this. That fool is cold for this.
You're twenty-six years old.
And his fucking. Oh my god, he had to bring back G Unit for this. Alright, pause that shit. That fool's wild for that. That fool's wild for that, that's a, that's a, he diss tracked his son.
Oh yeah, bro, he made a whole sketch, he did a whole sketch.
You know what that shows fool, from Fifty Cent, he's cold, bro. He's a lizard. He's too, he's too cold, P I M P is facts.
There you go, see? Back to my point, I grew up on Fifty Cent.
That was my first musical artist.
My first CD was Cisco Thong Song.
First CD was Get Rich or Die Tryin'.
Enter the, enter the dragon, Cisco. I used to be right there at fucking, what is it? Casa Latina, the hip, the 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 music store? No type of fucking uh Purell or nothing on the headphones, all the herpes right here.
So what what kind of piece of shit son do you gotta be for Fifty Cent to come at you this hard?
He must be a bitch ass fool, dog. It's the apa versus the hijo. You know what I mean, apa ver- apa?
For sure spoiled, huh? You ever see a kid like?
When, when has any of us got a sixty-seven hundred a month?
Bro, not even the fucking, the stimmy was that much.
You ever see kids out in public like acting up and you just like feel bad for the parents? Yeah, you feel bad for the parents?
You don't ever get that urge to like smack the shit out of a kid that and the parents not doing nothing about it?
Not that bad. It's not that fucking, you ever wanna crucify a child?
Backhand to the back of the head or.
Or like a knuckle, fool, we used to, yeah, dog, I feel you though, I feel you though. I understand with um.
Hey, shut your kid up.
Yeah, today, fool, some some kids at the market be acting up, dog.
Yeah, and then the parents just sit there like there's, like they don't exist.
But like who the fuck am I to say, fool, I have no kids, dog, I have a fucking husky that doesn't even listen to me.
For reals.
You know what I mean, that fool, hey, I tell that fool, come here, he goes.
Whatever. No treats, having ass. I I don't know if I could ever have a son and like not kick it with that. What piece of shit son do you gotta be so that your dad doesn't wanna kick it with you?
And matter of fact, creates content against you.
Like, oh, my mom said, that's what it probably what it is, that he kicks it with his son and his son can't stop talking about what his mom said. Like, fool, I don't wanna hear what your mom's saying.
But that's a whole different culture too, you gotta understand that, that's baby mama, baby daddy shit. I mean, now that that shit does um happen nowadays, I think, but back then it was looked fucking bad upon like if you separated us, like, you know what I mean? Like in the nineties, like if you had like fucking a kid and you guys were living separately, it was like, oh, you know, yeah.
It's like kinda co-parenting. They gave it a cool name.
Yeah, cool, yeah, now it's, it's like fucking uh van life, you're just homeless, dog.
Cool name, co-parent, oh, you guys are toxic.
Yeah, you guys are fucking crazy.
Nah, there's good co-parents out there, bro. Some people make it work, you know, some people make it work. But you gotta think about it like this, bro, it's crazy. Imagine being a little kid, right? And your parents are uh separated. You kick away your mom a couple of days a week. Kick away your dad a couple of days a week and you have teachers like all the days. Your mom's telling you one thing. Your dad's telling you another thing and then you got your teachers telling you a whole nother thing. He's like, who the fuck am I supposed to fucking learn from here?
It's a fucking overload.
And then you just become a fucking uh street kid.
A SoundCloud rapper.
And then you go around and you start a podcast and then.
And then you'll be like right there like, eh, apa, fuck you sixty-four hundred, no, no, dog.
Not enough, fool, I got, I got a baby myself, that I gotta pay child support. He's paying his grandchild's child, child support or anything.
That fool has a kid? Uh, who knows, probably. I don't know, that fool looks a lot like Fifty Cent too. Yo, that's fucking, that's nickel cent.
That's fucking half dollar?
That's a half.
Twenty-five cent?
I did, I did, you said something like you grew, I grew up listening to some fucking uh, some other shit too. I was a skater fool, I was like fucking tra tra tra. You know, I would listen to like. Blink one eighty-two and shit.
Oh yeah, Blink one eighty-two's the shit.
You know, and then you just like, air guitar, you're nuts. That was one of the most fireest uh MTV Cribs, Travis Barker.
Hey, so I guess he's all good now, right?
He's not fucking.
He had like a crazy like health scare, no, like not that long ago.
It was like cancer, wasn't it?
They're getting back together.
Uh someone told me uh, one of them looks like they have cancer.
Well, probably Travis cuz he's bald, right?
Yeah, that that just said that, yeah, that that should be good, fool. I mean, a fucking sick ass tour like that, you saw the tour list? It's fucking a lot.
They were coming back, but I didn't see the list.
Yeah, look up the Blink one eighty tour tour.
That's, I seen the commercial when the. I hope they come everywhere. They got that from fucking Tom Segura. Tom Segura's tour's name is I'm Coming Everywhere. That's how they're fucking making the commercial, like, oh, I hope they come.
Oh my god, bro. Look, they're in, just to give you guys an example.
And like you wanna know what's crazy about this? Look at the dates, look how close they are together, bro.
Twenty-third to twenty-six, they're in fucking Colombia, twenty-four to twenty-six, they're in Brazil, get the fuck out of here.
Damn, they're going from Detroit, Michigan to Toronto, Ontario in two days.
How much IV? Do you think those are gonna be like hooked up to IVs? Like blood transfusions and shit, you have to, huh? Private or or like SpaceX uh fucking SpaceX uh like pods and shit?
They got like probably like forty, fifty shows, dude.
Like I was tripping the fuck out, but that's what's up, fool, like just a little, a little taste of uh Reminition.
I think it's remission.
That's when you survive cancer.
Isn't this like mechanical engineering, bro? Remission, that sounds like.
WD-40's my cologne, bro. You know what the fuck going on, bro? Yeah, just fucking loot my shit up, dog.
I might start skating again.
Hell yeah, do the, do the competition.
Blink one eighty-two? I used to skate to Blink one eighty-two. You know, that day I remembered, I I wonder if you were there? We were skating in my, in my driveway and we had a two by four on the floor and we're olling over it. I ollied over it, well, I didn't ollie cuz I, my back tires didn't make it. And like the 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 skateboard stopped and I hit my head really hard in the back. I didn't open it, but I hear, you know, when when school, like school hits concrete, it goes. It's ugly, you know, I got that. And I wonder if like, I got CTE.
Yo, big facts, bro.
That's not, and that's not the only time I've hit my head that hard. I remember one time at the mall, I I ate shit. Hit my head and actually opened it.
You hit your head and you got super sick ass smart. That's a new fucking cartoon right there. Shout out Cartoon Network, R I P Cartoon Network.
You think if I do it again, I get smarter?
Nah, maybe you get like, you take one step forward and then if you do it again, you take two steps back. You fuck, bro, you start fucking.
So I should do it again to take one more step forward and then don't do it again.
No, don't hit your head again, bro.
And I'll be back where I started.
Yeah, you're gonna go back to your start. But yeah, hitting your head, fool, at this stage, I'm telling you, fool, it's fucking whack, fool. Or like when you do something and someone above you like drop something on your head, like I understand the level of anger. Like why the fuck would you do that? You know what I mean? Like accidents get me angry. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but it's an accident.
But it's an accident though, but I shouldn't be, I should be like, I shouldn't get angry, but it's like, uh like spilling a cup of milk.
That's an accident. Dumbass.
You know what I mean? That's what I do. That's what the fuck I'm talking about. When you spill a class, a glass of milk, I I I know. Emo- like mentally and emotionally, I shouldn't get mad, fool.
But why are you gonna cry over spilled milk?
Yeah, I fucking cry.
That's an actual saying, huh? Don't cry over spilled milk?
Yeah, fool, like if you, or like, or like when you're supposed to do something correctly. Like procedures to it, like for example, jacking up a car. Now I'm talking personal shit. When you jack up a car, there's carjack spots in the car.
I thought you were talking about when you go get a, like a G ride.
You start listening to the West Side Connection, dog.
Thought you were gonna talk about like.
Proper procedures to doing shit, when you start cutting corners, that shit pisses me off.
The car could fall on you. Have you seen that video, the fool that has the Corvette up on the the thing? That's gotta fucking suck.
I'm gonna fucking start calling Ocean motherfuckers, dog.
Oh, that's the fucking, the insurance people know.
Yeah, fool, we need to start being, I'm a snitch. Take it, take it back, never, never, never.
I don't know what got in this guy's head, robot.
It's just like accidents make me mad, fool, like for example, something as simple and avoidable as fuck, fool. Some chick at TwitchCon broke her ass. For fucking over the nothing, dog, over being stupid, just jumping off a ledge. And just broke her ass, no offense to her and I'm not trying to like, you know, be mean to her or anything. It's just something avoidable, an accident, super avoidable. Broke her ass, fool, and now she can't even walk and shit.
She broke her back in two places.
Can you look that up? Uh, Chris, uh TwitchCon broke her ass.
Adriana Chechik. No, 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 okay. I'll tell you this after we talk about this.
Yeah, fool, she fucking broke her ass on a foam pit, dog. From going, from going to to San Diego to TwitchCon to celebrate her, you know, accomplishments on streaming, which is, you know, kudos to her and everything, fool. But to a broken ass not being able to to walk because she wanted to fucking be like cool and shit.
Yeah, the video's on Twitter. So at TwitchCon, they had this uh foam pit. But it was very shallow. They didn't, it it wasn't like a sky zone foam pit where like the bottom is. It's endless, right? They they probably had like two feet maybe, I don't know, who knows, of just foam things, right? She got on the thing, did like that cheerleader splits in the air where you put like the. She landed on her ass in the foam pit. And like hit the fucking concrete. She probably got CTE in her sky.
When you jump into the TwitchCon foam.
And that's another thing too, fool, like it's a serious matter. I think she's starting to sue TwitchCon.
Oh, she should.
Yeah, dude, no mom is.
And you know what, so like she's a, she's an adult star, so all her money comes from her using her body, even on Twitch, she's. Streaming on Twitch.
She's an adult star.
She's gonna be out of commission for a a couple of months, a handful of months, bro, because. Oh, some fucking, some paraplegic fetishes? I've always wanted to smash a girl in a mu mu. She's a life support fetish, like what are you talking about, bro?
Or you know those, those pu- those porns where like, oh, I'm stuck. Stuck and I can't get out of the fucking guys, like, you know?
That, she's in a full body cast and it just has a hole in the back in the bottom.
That's fucked up though.
That's fucked up.
Imagine that, fool, breaking your ass though, fuck.
Yeah, you can't do shit, you can't, you can't take a shit properly.
Wait, what, what did like, what did she really break though?
Her back.
Her back.
Two places.
Cuz when I hear people break their ass, I'm like, you mean pelvis?
Or the 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 tailbone. Why do humans have tailbone?
Because we're born with them.
Ask God. And I see the weather, no, no, I can't wait a time for a preguntel, a ver si. Save que por qué? Por qué nos dio tailbone?
Hashtag little bromo, subscribe, follow.
Hey, so the other day, right, um, I got on my computer, I was just chilling and uh, I went on Twitch, right? And I I went to see what streaming was all about. And I, I want to see what streaming was all about. And there's people playing video games, you're probably familiar, cause you play video games. There's fucking people like, like her and like other hot models, they kick it in, in, like by pools or by hot tubs. They're just chilling, showing off their body. There's ASMR, where they do ASMR, like some crazy shit. And then, so I'm like, just, like this is all new to me, right? And then I'm, I'm trying not to be on YouTube and Reddit, so I went to Twitch to see what else is out there. And then I came across discord dot G G. Have you heard of what Discord is? Have you heard of Discord? I don't know what it is, right? So I just went, opened a new tab, discord dot G G. I got on, bro. I was on there for probably like two minutes, three minutes tops. Didn't know what the fuck was going on. I got scared, like that.
I'm getting anxiety right now.
And then I just went back to YouTube, and I was like, let me just kick it on YouTube.
I've heard of Discord, I've heard of, I heard of Discord because of Lo Prior Brothers, the Lo Prior.
I don't know what the fuck it was, I, I was like, what is this?
We're officially old, bro.
Start a new server.
Yeah, it's like a forum.
What the fuck is a server, dude?
Can I order some chips?
Like, you starting a server, do you want it for a community or for you and your friends? And I'm like, I don't know, I just wanna browse.
People can do a lot of shit there, like, one of the things I've, the first time I ever heard of Discord, I was playing a Pokemon game. And you can, there's these people online that will build custom Pokemon for you, and that's where they sell it. Okay, like, send us what you want, you know exactly what you want, if you want this, this, what attributes you want for it, then you pay them, and then they send it to you, that's what they use, it's like their, their marketplace.
Oh, so it's a marketplace for video games?
Not just that, like, it's a bunch of other shit, you know?
Damn, bro, yeah, these platforms, I mean, I'm not gonna sound, I don't wanna sound like an old head either, you know what I mean? Cause.
You're already doing it. Don't even worry about it, just say it, you shouldn't even have said that. You should have started like, let me start sounding like an old head, and then continue with your thoughts.
Yo, fool, fuck these platforms, that's all I wanted to say, fuck it, you got it out of me, dog.
But yeah, fool, I was on there for like three, got scared, took a deep sigh like that, I was like. And I just went to YouTube, bagged, I was like, let me just fucking go to my subscribers.
And you know what's crazy, is like on Twitter, on Twitter, you know, there's connections to all types of other, other platforms. That overwhelms me like that too, I'll be like, what the fuck, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out.
It's crazy, bro.
Yeah, I turned on the fucking uh, the tip for Twitter for us to, in case anybody wants to throw the.
Oh yeah, go do that, twitter dot com slash little, the little brown boys, just the tip.
And then we'll give you a shout out on the pod.
Fuck, yeah. I like that.
Yeah, fool, I turned it on, shout out Rose Can Vic, um, I did turn it on and then I was just like, fuck, like, sick, I was like, I felt accomplished. You know, like I did something major, all I had to do was just press a little fucking green button.
Enable.
Enable. But uh.
We should start a Discord, psych.
I don't know, fool.
I don't know what it is, so I can't even say.
Uh Reddit is just like, already just enough for me.
Yeah, I don't think you're the kinda guy for Reddit.
Nah, fool, I'll get fucking bullied, I'll just get jumped in.
Not even, I don't think you would get bullied, cause you wouldn't read all the comments. You'd be like, ah, fuck this shit.
Fuck everything.
There's no YouTube video on it? But yeah, shout out to YouTube, bro. Number one website in the world. The Little Brown Boys.
Yeah, there's a bunch of di- different shit like out there, fool, there's like, you know, groups of, of media teams, you know, like, like. We had, you know, Caesar from I E and Friends, we had, we just did Richard V as podcast, the uh American illegals. Um, there's other fools that, you know, support us and we support them. But like, that's a community, you know what I mean? Like Discord and Reddit, they're communities, right? And so are these groups, these social media groups. Like, why would you be go against your own, you know? Like, why would you even like beef it with somebody that you're working on a project with, like, for example, you know, the Tri Guys? You know what I mean?
I heard, I heard a little bit about.
Yeah, these fools fucking shunned one of their own. Because that fool was getting played. You know what I mean?
And they were hating?
They were ha- I don't know if they were hating fool, but like, that's what, I mean, it just ties in with everything that we're talking about, social media and platforms. Fuck that media character buildup, fool, like that, that shit that you have to hold up to, like that fake shit, like, like the wiggles. Like the characters, you know what I mean? You think those fools are out here, fruit salad, yummy yummy, you know what I mean? Motherfuckers out here smoking cigarettes, dog.
Doing heroin.
Doing heroin, fool, popping a pill.
What, like when you're an adult, making kid content?
So this fool, this fool, I don't know his name, what's his name? Whatever, one of the Tri Guys is a social media character. He had like a whole page um dedicated to uh marriage like content, right? He was with his wife. And then like this fool got caught cheating.
Do you remember kind of his name? Chris, Keith?
Keith, there you go. That fool got caught cheating and then the rest of the content crew like shunned him, he was like a director. Uh, media producer, all these titles, fool, cashing out on the social media shit, you know what I mean? But then like, just, just because he did like one thing, like they just have to shun him, I don't think that's right.
You don't think it's right?
I don't think, as a homie, as a, as me, me, is right. Like, I would, I'd just be like, hey, fool, you fucked up, check him real quick. And keep it moving. But now in society, it all ties back into like.
Keep it gangsta?
Like, keep it G, bro, keep it a hundred, own up to your fucking mistakes. You know what I mean? And then apologize, divorce, obviously, like, if you're not happy, divorce, stop fucking playing yourself.
There you go.
I think people do that because they don't wanna be associated with, like, like, the whole thing with like Seth Rogen and um James Franco.
Oh, Simone, yeah.
Something like that where it's like.
I would never do movies with that fool again.
You could say you fuck, like, you can say to someone like, you fucked up, but if you continue to associate yourself with them, you're also like, you know, you're kinda fucking up your own connections.
I think it was Ned, bro, Ned Fulmer.
Who gives a fuck?
The Tri Guys that made Ned Fulmer exit from the company was costly.
These are lukewarm takes, by the way. We didn't, we, we just got an iPad, we're trying to do this fucking cool shit, and we fucking suck.
The little bit I heard about it, um, was that this was married, right? He's in the Tri Guys and he also does content with his wife.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I think this fool was um, eh, having an affair with somebody that worked in the studio of the Tri Guys. And the reason that they dropped him, or he left, was because of the power dynamic. So, in that, in that. That studio, he's like a boss, like, not a boss, but he's like the head guy, right? Or they're the head, head man. And I think the lady was maybe an intern or somewhere lower level, right? So, in any working environment, that's already not good.
What is that word, nepotism? I was gonna say skepticism.
Yeah, when you get your brother a job. So, but like, so like the power dynamic makes that a little bit slippery, you know, because it's like, it could get real bad real fast. But like what you're saying about the, I follow that, like, the, if you're making content with your wife, but you're being a, a fucking dickhead on the side, like. That's so fake, it's like, it goes back to making content for kids as a grown up, like.
Yeah, these motherfuckers out here fucking fruit salading it at a, at a, at a norms. You know what I mean?
Keep it gangsta.
You know what I mean? Just like that, like, that's, I know that this is a, an audio podcast, but just look at the video like that, like.
I think it's a matter of time for a lot of these things, like when you can tell something's not authentic, it's always like a matter of time.
I lowkey get anxiety, fool, like from trying to speak my mind, from, from trying to speak my mind, cause I'm like, fuck, I don't even know how people are gonna take it, like.
Fuck them, bro, how about that? We'll find out when it drop, when the. Then you'll find out how they feel. Until then, can't save. Damn, that was whack.
That can't save?
Can you bleep that?
I mean, whatever, fool.
Hey, are you familiar with the Nell Boys? Do you remember the OG fools, Jesse and uh Kyle? The first two fools that started it?
Simone, yeah.
That fool Jesse, um, he's officially not part of Full Sand, not part of the Nell Boys no more. He has his own channel, he's starting, uh, it's called Sunday. But that's like another kind of these things where people fall out and shit like that. He just got tired of fucking. Like partying, being on the road and shit, he got sober, and he just wants to make content, whereas like the Nell Boys was taking that, that like. It was like a, like a, a fork in the road, right? When they got Steve Will Do It, you remember Steve Will Do It? Then they started drinking and getting all crazy. That fool's channel just got taken off YouTube, bro. He had two channels and they both it.
That fool said, whoever bought the Dahmer glasses for a hundred and fifty K, I got two hundred K for you.
That was crazy.
That fool's locked out, just like that, crazy. That, hey, fool, I got some rims in the back, like, yeah, I don't need anymore, drop a ten K real quick.
But that's crazy, imagine your whole, like, his whole thing is YouTube, right? Movie merch, too, right? But, like, your channel's just. What would you do, other than cry and get anxiety?
Just keep it pushing, bro, always keep it pushing, dog. Always keep it pushing, don't snitch. Don't ra- don't be racist anymore, fucking uh lukewarm takes. Uh, let me see, fucking Adam Family was sick as fuck. Let me just go down these fucking, fuck the Tri Guys. This has been another fucking episode of Little Brown Boys, you already know, we're over here trying to bring you guys some fucking hot takes and some funny shit, sorry if we fucking stuttered a lot. But this is what it takes, fool, just try and shit out. You know what I mean? We're the fucking Tri Guys now.
We're the, we're the new trifuse.
Trifuse, yeah. Alright, subscribe, like, follow, you already know, peace.
Leave me a nice comment, ladies.